So two. It's six oh two, and I'd like to call the September nineteenth Eastline Board of Ed regular meeting to order. If everyone can rise for the Pledge of Allegiance. And sorry, a little late, so getting a little organized. So, uh, public comment, is there any public comments today? Any public comment? Hearing none. We'll move on. That closes public comment. We move on to the approval of minutes. We have the minutes from the September twelfth Board of Ed regular meeting. Anyone have any changes or comments? Okay, does anyone want to make a motion? Laura. The seconds, all those in favor, and Candace, if you could put your hand, virtual hand up or say aye, that'd be great. All those in favor of approving the minutes, say aye.
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 Good, thanks Candace. Opposed? And abstaining? Kate, you were in at it right, so you abstain.
Well, I can still. So that they look good, yeah.
So then. Closes the approval, we'll move on to special reports, and Dan, I think we'll see virtually for the selectmen report. Thanks, Dan.
Uh, good evening. Um, nothing new since last week. This is Dan Cunningham. But I did attend the Waterford Eastline Shelfish Commission as ex officio. And there's a project going on where they're trying to reestablish some of the eelgrass in the river. And it's quite interesting, the, you know, how they do it and the chemistry involved. And I thought that might be something, uh, some of the teachers would want to be aware of, it might be something that they could learn more about as it starts to get underway, might be interesting to, you know, biology class or some other science class. So I would just point that out. That's my report.
Great, thanks, Dan. Any questions for that? I think we, we questioned you enough last week. Don't have any student representatives today, so we'll move on to the discussion action items, and the first item is Eastline High School NIAS, which is the New England Association of School and College Inc. Accreditation.
Yeah, thank you, Rob. So we wanted to take just a brief opportunity. Everyone's aware that last year, and well, leading up to a culmination of ten years of accreditation preparation, and we went through our NIAS visit last spring with the high school. And one opportunity for the high school, just to kind of give a brief overview of the recommendations and accommodations, and that you brought a team, so I'm gonna turn it over to you and give you ten minutes for a brief overview, and board members who play already received the full report. Okay, great.
And I'm giving you basically.
Thank you.
So basically, it's been the last four years that we've been working on. It started in the in the fall of twenty eighteen. It was self reflection. We also started with a different steering three chair and a different principal. So a lot has changed over the last four years, but we grudge not. But I do want to take this opportunity to thank these two, and Mrs. Bryant, who wasn't able to be here. This is, these are two out of three of the members of our steering committee, and we truly could not have done this without them there. You know, whether it was booking hotels and getting food, or making sure everything was bringing, there's uploading and everything else, and the lion's share of the work. So Maggie's gonna briefly explain the process, and then Jess and I will review just quickly with you the combinations and recommendations.
You running that grant or? There we go.
Thank you. So, um, for those of you that may have been familiar with the process of the NIAS accreditation in the past, I've just gone through some changes with the standards, and it's now really taking a whole mindset type of setup. So in the school year of so we're now expecting to complete self-reflection at the school, then the collaborative practice falls after that. Followed by a two years later, the study visit, which is what happened in March of last year. The team of teachers came together and wrote the self-reflection report, and from that identified some priority areas of growth.
So I know we can enlarge this.
Okay. That's going on board. You want to?
Every, in the heads up that Jess provided.
If you want to sign into the Zoom too, you can bring it right up on the screen.
Just don't connect to audio.
Don't connect to audio, yes.
So the collaborative practice was held in the fall of twenty nineteen. A small visiting team came to the school and reviewed our self-reflection, and that with any of the stakeholders at the high school and their school over the course of two days. Through that process, our priority areas of growth were kind of solidified and finalized. And we were charged with taking those priority areas and working on those over the next two years, which incidentally happened at the same time as the pandemic. During that time, we continued to meet, say for this for Zoom, to work on the areas of growth with emphasis on developing our vision of the graduate and the Viking voyage. While the pandemic made it aspects hard, we also were very successful with with soup and the benefits of technology and shares. Cheerleaders, et cetera. So our priority areas of growth, formalized visits to graduate, working on our summer, yeah, goals, creating a world, our frequent contact format, really looking at counselors, being able to support kids in a little bit more specific end to end bags, and then thinking about budget and the technology infrastructure that we have and working with support there. So the book committee then came in March, and during that time, they spoke with representatives from many areas of stakeholders in the building, as well as the board of education, and observed as many aspects of the high school as they could during that time. While they specifically focused on the priority areas of growth, they observed and focused on all aspects of Eastline High School. And I get to talk about some of the recommendations. So I've actually been on these types of visits before, when you go to another school and you get to what they do, it's, it's really valuable to me for the teachers that are going there and seeing a whole new way of, so the differences that had a difference with us, they really liked about the things that they did, and they gave us new recommendations. I'll just highlight some of them. So access of community within the building, the number of qualities you produce publications. The vision of the graduate, which, which is a people also help, basically having this multiple sources of input for a vision of the graduate. We need numbers, we include salmon, et cetera. The fact that we were able to roll that vision of the graduate through the Viking voyage during advisory, the academic and social emotional supports for students, et cetera. The completion of district five curriculum template and revision cycle. We can do it some one-on-one technology with our devices, the unique touchboards, the increase in the library, which just is a really great time to thank the Board of Ed and just say that we would not even be able to accomplish some of those things, but it worked for all of your support with legislative matters. And the variety assessments that they observed, ensuring student choice, multiple opportunities for students to participate in classroom, and appreciation of students for the opportunities to be their own learning, the commitment to instructional and support service since practice that, that needs individual, where we need students. So I said, who's don't worry?
So you have in front of you a list of what our priority goals were, what are, all of our recommendations, and then all of our recommendations. So the recommendations are broken down into recommendations by priority area, as well as some general ones at the end. And rather than read through all of these, they just have them in front of you and they're written for it. We just wanted to highlight a few of them, and the ones here in bold are the ones that we're going to be focusing on sort of right out of the gate. I will say that we got the report the day after the last day of school, and so the faculty has not had a lot of opportunity to really dig into this. But some of these things align with the building goals already, are the improvement plan, the district improvement plan, and some of them with scale gap work. So first of all, the vision of the graduate, we know what it is, we have it, we're now working on how do we assess it, how do we continue to help students make a connection between the vision of graduate and real world, and how do we push this into a K twelve vision of graduate, which is one of the recommendations that they have. Some of that will be also maybe more conversation and communication with parents about it, so that they're part of the Viking voyage. And also, I think, one of our big tasks, because this year's graduating class, the master's based diploma assessment is graduation requirement, so making sure that we have an assessment in place for that. And then, we, if you heard a lot about our MTSS support systems, they were very impressed with what we were doing. It's time for it to grow a little bit more. So we're gonna, with the help of our math coach and the Student Support Services, counseling, school psychology, social workers. We're gonna hone in a little bit more on the actual structure of MTSS and start to expand the programming to meet the needs for students for social emotional support. My hope is that that will also help us make sure that our psychologists, counselors, and social workers are using their time as efficiently and effectively as they can. They could be busy twenty-four seven, year-round, more than that, but we need to make sure that we're using them the best way possible. And then, so with the curriculum revision cycle, we heard loud and clear from the teachers that they needed time. So we started the school year with a very intentional approach to time by building the master schedule around increased common planning time. So the teachers now have time within school day during their planned time to eat, and that's also increasing some of their PLs sometimes. So that's sort of our beginning of trying to make sure that they have the time that they need to develop the curriculum. With that comes including aspects of vision of graduate, SBL, DDI, all of the different pieces that we're bringing together into the curriculum, right? And then there's our support staff, and I sort of mentioned this already, but making sure that their time is being used the best way possible. And I meet with them pretty regularly. We're starting to talk a little bit about tiered interventions, so that we're efficiently using their time as well as effectively using their time with the right people. It's really easy in our building, because our support staff is all over the place for kids to find many people who are willing to listen to them. And so we're gonna try to put some structure in place so that students know where to go first, and then we know where to get us to in the following steps. Last one, okay, yeah. And then, by, in the next few weeks, most of our faculty will have clear touch reports, and I've already heard loud and clear from them that those that don't have them yet are very excited about getting some training, because they're, they're, they're actually the news coming from the people that already have them has been really, really positive, so they're really looking forward to that. And this kind of rehashes, these are some of the general recommendations, which is here, are in some ways very similar to the ones that we already talked about, focused on the curriculum, vision of the graduate, the Viking voyage, a lot about curriculum. That was an area for us going into the self-study, that was a little nebulous, and it's now definitely become a lot more clear and more structured. Lastly, I just want to thank all of the members of our committee, in addition to the steering committee, to these people who were part of the self-study, and the work, writing, and investigating. Overall, we had, considering it was year two of the pandemic, and probably one of our most challenging years, we had a wonderful visit. We had a lot of positive feedback while they were there. I actually had someone say, if you ever have an opening, please let me know. I'd love to work here. So it was a really positive experience, and these guys have been a lion's share of the work. Questions?
I do, I have a parent question. Is there going to be some kind of a parent info session about what is a vision of the graduate and the Viking voyage artifact thingy that's in the course? I just saw it in course things at the beginning of the year, and I'm like, what the heck is an artifact? And how do you get it?
So for those who don't have a purchase, right, so, right, so for freshman parents saw some of that as they implement what we're into the shape, we now have it to be able to show them, as we go to course selection, like right now, we're in the parent nights for college.
Oh, yeah, I know, I, I.
When we get into course selection, we'll go back.
Okay. Because I, I know, I know somewhat of, I know the Viking I'm having a really tough time tonight, I'm sorry. The whole Viking artifact thing is the thing that completely and utterly threw me for the big loop. I'm like, you're a junior. Do you have any of these artifacts? Are you gonna get them this year? Like, I'm so confused.
You can find two part of the Viking voyage is for them to own.
Right, but it was, the language, I think the language is new, so I'm like really confused, and she has no idea if she has any of them, so I'm.
Look at her, no, yes.
No idea.
We haven't done it until December or January, so we did our first.
Okay, so I'm like, I.
We have time during advisory for them, so like set aside for advisory for them.
Okay.
This year, we're working to help identify for the students. This might be a Viking voyage, I think, so.
Esteban. Question. So first of all, thank you all for, for working on this. I know firsthand all the time, whenever, the way we preparation for this. So I do have a question for the, for the recommendations. Is there a deadline or a timeline where you have to implement this, or like what's, what does it look like?
There is a series of reports that we have to do over the course of the next eight years, or the next, probably more like six years, before we start the process. So I have to report back a few things in the first six months, and then after two years, and so there's a kind of an ongoing evaluation and assessment of our a lot of it is, you know, self-study-ish, and you need to do that.
Thank you.
Sorry, I have another one. Sorry, priority level three, the de-leveling of the courses. I know we had done a lot of work on changing the leveling a little bit a couple of years ago. Do they mean all courses or just some of them?
I think they need to look at it.
Okay. Because I mean, there is, there is some pros in the levels. Okay. I didn't know if they gave you like more feedback than.
Certainly, for instance, we're not going to not have a.
Okay, no, I get, well, because they said A and B, but I think there is some positive of keeping them separate, so, but I also see the uniqueness of bringing them together. Okay. Okay. Okay.
Were you gonna ask a question? Well, I think kind of on the line of what Esteban has already asked. All right, thank you, though. You guys did a beautiful job, and very comprehensive, and I really appreciate that. The thing that I'm curious about is the additional recommendations. It just seems really nebulous as far as like additional career pathways. You know, how much, to what extent, what areas, that kind of thing, how do you decide that? And there's a whole number of additional recommendations embedded in all of that. So I guess my first comment would be, or question would be, would or are you planning on then doing clearer definitions of each of those more nebulous concepts that are presented? Identify and dedicate common planning time to put appropriate teachers. So who are the appropriate teachers to complete the writing of the curriculum, that kind of thing, to understand.
I understand what you're saying. I think some of that is just kind of ongoing. As far as like the example you just gave, I surveyed the teachers at the end of the year, find out who wanted to be working together, who was teaching by courses, and that's how we determine who is going to have an opportunity to have common planning time, and who are they are. As far as the patents, I think, yes, their, their recommendations are fairly nebulous. They'll take that and sort of work on it, but over the next, over the next years, this isn't everything has to be done right away. So in some of these cases, we even have, we haven't even had a chance to really talk about it or quantify it, or get specific.
Right. Again, like sufficient training for staff and the technology applications apart, where what is, you know, blended learning.
And those are all their words, so we have to figure out what to do with them.
Interesting, okay.
They keep it pretty broad, it seems. Yeah, and let us kind of narrow it in that. That's the committees.
Recommendations are kind of for us to digest and decide what we want to do.
But this is a national organization or state?
It happens to be the regional.
Regional organization.
These committee members are all made up of your different teachers and administrators and staff members from around the state.
They do on Sunday, and they leave on Wednesday, and in the street there, they write this whole report.
No, it's great. So I appreciate it, and it looks like there's some good outcomes and ideas and plans, so thank you.
William and Laura.
Yeah. Real big, I mean, the, the fact that the bulk of this work happened in the middle of the pandemic is just beyond impressive. So major kudos there. And you kind of hinted to this, but I'm curious how this is gonna line up with the building improvement plan, is the idea to bake these recommendations into that, so everyone's kind of growing together, or?
Well, it's always a little bit of a unique challenge for a high school, because while we're working on the building improvement plans, and the background, yes, exists, we're best to try to align them as much as possible. Fortunately, I feel like a lot of it, SBL, it's ongoing, we're working on, we're gonna continue to work on it. The curriculum piece will align with hits, you know, so that they're, they may not look directly aligned, but it's kind of our job to make sure that it's not more than what the teachers are gonna be able to do, or outline something else on top of it, instead of creating it.
Cool.
I'm looking forward to seeing the decisions in the name and the outcomes of this, so I do hope you'll come back and tell us how that all.
Many more years to discuss, that's for sure. Ongoing.
Thank you, everybody.
Thanks so much.
Thanks a lot, yeah.
Great work.
Yes. Yes, please.
Yeah, thanks so much. That's some great work, and let's move on. Now, similar, we're going to the middle school discussion presentation on Eastline Middle School, NELMS, New England League of Middle Schools Spotlight School Designation.
Yeah, so, yeah, so the middle, come out to, the middle school has once again been recognized, um, years in a row, is it now?
Um, in consecutive, it predates me, so I want to say it's a little late, two thousand.
Yeah, so.
It's a process that gets renewed every three years, or four years. So I'm gonna just pass something out. There's two documents here, and I'm short, because I've been sharing them with my principal colleagues in Connecticut, who have asked for them. So there's two of them that are actually the Spotlight School renewal process, and then based on, on that process, we were able to develop a document, it's called, it's just a end of the year state of the schools, but it's really a lot of the same material, so I should, thought I would share those, so if you want to take a look, there's a, you want to, at the end of So that's, I'm asking my team to come on up. Stand up here with me, and we'll just get started. So that said, um, I got with me tonight, Mrs. Kelly, Assistant Principal, I got Mr. Cruz, who's our social worker, Mr. Carroll, who's our school counselor in the building. So just to give you a little background on New England League of Middle Schools, they promote sort of the best practices at the middle school level. They provide learning, collaborative experiences, it supports everything that we do. But what's really important for us is that New England League of Middle Schools covers six states and it covers over three hundred schools. And only twelve schools in Connecticut are honored as Spotlight Schools, and only twenty-eight schools in all of New England are honored.
How many in the state?
Six, twelve schools in Connecticut. Twenty-seven schools overall in all of New England, and there are six states and three hundred members altogether.
That's awesome.
So we're pretty excited about that.
Congratulations.
At the end, I'll go over our recommendations for our teams in the faculty, so I'll just start.
Absolutely. We thank very much the needs, Jason, Santa, Buddy, Kelly. First of all, I want to say thank you for giving me the opportunity to share the achievements of Eastline Middle School, and we knew this is our way to school. I'm really honored and proud to be able to do this and to review some of the areas that NELMS commended us for. They had visited with us in May, they spent a day with us, they met with some of our students, they met with some of our staff members, we had some parents from our school community that came in, and they observed various classrooms, various teams during the course of the day, and visited with us. One of the areas that was noteworthy that they did commend us for on was staff dedication to the middle school level. Briefly, just to kind of share some of the things that happen in the day-to-day. In our building, we're really fortunate to have a team approach philosophy that allows for us, for our staff, to really have continual and ongoing and consistent communication about children, and not just academically, but the whole child, all aspects. Some of the times that our team are able to do that is through either their team time that they have, to do something that we have kid talk, or we ask our related service folks push in and discuss student concerns, our student life team, our team leaders, all of these areas allow for focus on academics, life skills, abilities of students, as well as social, emotional wellbeing of our children. So that was one area. And the second area that we recommended for was great leadership, and strong instructional staff for other students really well. And again, our teachers are very fortunate, they offer really meaningful learning experiences by working with their students in small groups and individually to really facilitate and accelerate the learning model of their students. Last year, the visitors got a chance to see some of the students participating in the student-centered coaching cycles, and all their teachers did rotate through the student-centered coaching, which was really great. That also incorporated interactive technology in all of our content and subject areas. And again, it just allowed for continual ongoing data and assessment and collection of all that data that the staff collected, some of the things included the I Ready, the IES, and of course the EAS back. So that, that really helped us in that area as well. Thirdly, strong-based, strong project-based learning. Our students really, the committee got a chance to see some of our students working across curriculum project, inquiry-based activities, hands-on labs, and a lot of simulations, and really making the connection between the application of learning in the classroom, and then making that bridge to other areas in the building, you know, being able to take some of those skills and transfer them to the setting and apply them to the world that they live in around. So they were really pleased with that. Fourth, one of the other topics that the NELMS committee had, were commended us on, was the effective looping. They were really happy with seeing the relationship, the connection that our teachers have to the bridge of students. And the teacher cycle, helping our students, and I think that that's one of the greatest luxuries that our schools have. It really gives our staff the opportunity to forge those relationships, not only with the students, but with the families, parents, understanding student needs, and really helping with classroom management, especially the second term loop, and around running, and students are familiar with each other in the years, and teachers are familiar with some of the older things that I just mentioned. Um, one of the other things that was really noteworthy was our enrichment and exploratory programs. That is highlighted in the material that Jason had shared with you, and just to kind of showcase some of that, our students range age eleven, fourteen. We offer thirty-five clubs at the middle school level, or teams. We had over six hundred students who would participate, and ninety percent were clubs with five fire staff. Some of the skills that they learn are, you know, they try something that they haven't tried before, taking that risk, teamwork, team management, self-esteem, really kind of giving back a sense of community, personal exploration. One of the things that they were involved with was the morning news, and that was strong encouraging for our effort in our building to come during the morning news time. That is just the coolest thing to see the students run that morning news show, first time they walked back home, like, they're like, they need to channel it. It's just so cool to see them on the staff working. So lastly, the last thing that I wanted to share for my point that I want to bring up was the outreach to the communication through parents and the community. Jason, Mr. Yonder Stan, she and the others, the other assistant principals and myself, were really hard with making sure we just move the weekly parent letters every Friday, and send out a written communication, we sent out the videos. Jason, today, this flyers like chat is always a hit at the holiday time. Our teams also gave regular updates in the classroom, we're giving emails, phone calls. And last year, they also provided two videos for the teams, newsletters from the teams. Our school counselors provide these letters during the course of the year, and then our social workers also provide quarterly updates. Our school counselors provide these letters during the course of the year and then our social workers also provided quarterly updates. We gave some feedback to our members' health. So we were, we were really honored. We had a great visit. I don't know if I've talked a lot, but I'd like to argue this here too.
Okay, again, I manage Carroll, one of the school counselors at Eastline Middle School. We were also commended for the way we collect data, which not only includes our academics, but the social emotional support that we provide for our students. As of course, that has been developed on a weekly basis to review data within our M T S S program. We look at our universal screener, guess the results and some students that may be a first at that time. We review this data to assess as educators to ensure that we're supporting our students with appropriate academic and social emotional strategies. We've been using this process of collection. It's been really helpful in identifying students who may need any additional support on any given day. We were also commended for our advisory program. The program is designed by our advisory committee, which is a mix of not only support staff, but also some teachers within our building. We utilize the social emotional learning needs of all students, all students participate in this program. And students are placed in groups of 10 to 15 students and we meet twice a month with the same adult. The committee has incorporated the five castle competencies, which are relationship skills, responsible decision-making, self-awareness, self-management and social awareness. The goal of our advisory program is to provide students with essential schools' strategies within their social emotional work. So that program is something that happens all year round and the students also stay with that same tool for that two years that they're leaving with their teachers as well.
We were also commended for having the I committee in our school, the diversity inclusion. We had three members on the building level. Kelly, myself, and Ms. Hillinski represent the district, the district level. And then we bring back to the building and try to align the work that's been done at this district level. Last year, we have six students volunteered to be part of the meeting. There were seventh and eighth graders because they wanted to be relevantally appropriate based on the topics that we discussed during those meetings. We developed an agenda and issued it to the rest of the staff so that they know when the meetings were happening and they were welcome to attend the meetings as well. The agenda and the minutes were also posted of the teams, so teachers have access to whatever it is that's supposed to be at any time. We decided to take two volunteering boards in the building because we wanted to begin from the point of view of informing people, informing our student community, our parents, people that went to the building. One of the volunteering boards is dedicated to let people know whether or not they're attending, why they were part of the meeting and the work that we were going to do. And the other one was designed to post student work that aligned or highlighted cultural and technical groups in the building. To highlight the elements of diversity in the building. We use a calendar and every month we identify what the groups and we posted the information in one of the volunteering boards. We reviewed the important focus points on the body that was done last year. And then we decided what we wanted to do in the building, our building level, again aligned with the work that Chad is doing. We wanted to bring forth a sense of belonging and acceptance for every student who walks into the building. We want to do a clear and accurate intuitions of equity and build a better sense of belonging for all students that are in the building. And we wanted to identify additional hand-on experiences for students and adults in the building. And to that point, this year, we have an after-school class. Probably mentioned, we have several, but we're very happy that this year we have students who will be part of the diversity, diversity inclusion committee to have student voice and decide how else we can highlight what we do in the building so that all students are happy. So in terms of recommendations, the team, visiting team came down and provided us with a list of things that highlight those. They would like us to present at the annual conference, which is going to be next May, so we're going to put a team together and we will do that. And we're probably going to present our data analysis process. There was a really high interest in that, number one, in our coaching model. Number two, they want us to host school visits, so we're working on that right now. We've already had a couple districts reach out, which is a great part of being part of that network is. Also to highlight our classroom and teaching practices in our monthly videos, so in addition to fireside chat, I think I'm going to be producing some instructional videos as well. Continue to provide teams with the time they need to talk about students and to continue with our flex block to apply interventions as needed. The last piece that they were interested in, and I found this really interesting, that we were going to write a book about our process. Probably not, but I've talked to them since and they are interested in sort of a how-to guide, a quick start guide with some of these processes that we can share and just kind of spread that across those 300 schools that are part of our network. So we were really happy to come down, have them come down because sometimes when you're right in the middle of a school year, you need to calibrate to see where you are relative to other schools. You need to just know that you're doing it right. And to have their perspective, they spend so much time in other districts throughout New England and to have them come down and really devote the time to us and give us that feedback is really, really important to us. We're proud of our students, we're proud of our faculty, really proud of our staff. And because of that, we were rewarded with that renewal for another three years and so glad that it's over, but happy to have put together the material to share that with you. So if you have any questions, we're a great team that can answer.
Well, congratulations.
May have mentioned, I think a lot of information got thrown out. I'm familiar with the S because I work at high school. What does this team look like that comes to visit?
It's, um, there's a two-step process to it and one is they send you out a document of all the information that you need to gather and present to them. So two of the documents going around and certainly the state of the schools reports is some excitement, it's the same document. So we brought a team together within our building to kind of answer all those questions. That's what took us the bulk of the year last year to do. And then they have a visiting committee to come down. So it was the Vice Chair of the New England League of Middle Schools, who's also a principal in Massachusetts. Another administrator came down and then lots of emails and phone calls with the Director of New England League of Middle Schools.
So the visitor was really just two people showing up and going through the building?
Two people in the building. The last time we did it, four years ago, we had about four hundred people come down.
Okay.
And then they go back and they compile their findings and share with their broader team. Anybody else?
Not a question, but a comment from when my children are at the middle school, your fireside chats were a nice hit. And if anyone hasn't seen Mr. Brickgood's fireside chats, I recommend watching.
I think we're only three months away from the next one.
We'll be sure to share it.
Started as just another way to communicate with people and, you know, a lot of letters go home and maybe they get read, maybe they don't get read. But I think everyone watched the video and started this something, so I get a lot of requests. Are you going to do it this year?
The kids love it. We love sitting around watching.
Are you like?
Sorry.
Well, again, congratulations and beautiful job. I do take issue with the word push-in though. When anybody ever uses the word push-in, like push in for services and I just think that just goes so contrary to the whole idea of inclusion and acceptance and what you two are speaking to. So you're talking about that and that was what my whole focus was on in my career for 35 years was helping the child who was identified as having different needs, feeling like that child was included. So to say we do push-in for services, I'd really like to strike that from our vernacular and completely, if possible, to never say that again, to say we are including, we are helping that child or him or her, the group to feel welcome and a part of it and part of the curriculum, part of the process, part of the decisions and not pushed in, okay? I just have to say that.
Great, well, thanks so much, Cheryl. Really great.
Thanks, guys. Congratulations.
Jason, we'll remember to collect those at the, at the end.
Jason, do you want them back now or?
No, I'll do it at the end.
Are you sure?
I read it.
Okay. Thanks so much. We are going to move on. The next, we have a discussion and action item. The C S D E educator flexibilities for the 2022-2023 school year.
Yeah, so this is back again. It's just the yearly approval review.
As a result of COVID, the state had created some flexibilities how we approach the teacher evaluation and goal-setting process. So last spring, the state had voted to extend the flexibilities one more year. And so the PDAC committee did agree that it made sense to move forward with the flexibilities as they stand for one more year. Because the state is also looking at revising just in general. Yeah. So we didn't want to go back to something and then have to make a shift again. I also think that there's been some really positive outcomes of the flexibilities. Teachers actually work together to do some goal-setting together instead of it being all individual, which has helped to support the P L C model and some collaboration. And some other flexibilities are included are that the focus of the goals could be a little bit broader stroke in terms of focusing on whole child development. And we really still feel so that's important right now because we are still, you know, recovering from not only academic loss, but some S E L needs as well. So PDAC, the Professional Development Evaluation Committee, did vote unanimously to move forward with the flexibilities that the state also requires us to put it in front of the board for your approval as well.
We will definitely, that's like I see a whole new evaluation system for certified staff for next year.
Yeah, and so the PDAC committee will have two subcommittees this year. One focused on professional development and the other focused on whatever the state comes out with regards to suggestions and will take a look at those suggestions through the lens of our current evaluation system.
Any questions for our lead? So make a motion.
I would like to make a motion to approve the C S D E educator flexibility for the 2022-2023 school year.
Secondly, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye. Aye.
Aye, aye. We got you both. Thank you. Yeah, we got your vote. Thanks, Candace. Thanks, Jill. Opposed, abstained. Okay, motion passed. So let's move on to next topic, which is Board of Education Goals. And this is really a discussion and maybe a little brainstorming, you know, as we start thinking about our goals for this year. And obviously coinciding with, with Jeff's goals, superintendent's goals. Are there any, you know, so I think there were a couple, you know, the policy committee has done a great job of almost, we're almost done with updating all the policies, very close. That seems like one we should have that finish it off because we're, we're close and to finish it off. There's also, I forget what the goal was called, but it was like recovery or something like that, that we're still in the process and still working on. So those were two that my view is like, probably want to keep something along those two. But the others, and we typically, I think, have four or five goals. I think we have five, somewhere like four or five goals. So are there any areas of focus that you would like or think about that we may be interested in? And this will just brainstorm a little bit and then we can, we'll follow up more with, we can work on wording and coming up with the goal. But I just thought, open it up first and discussion about our goals for this year, if there's any area of focus.
I mean, the first thing that jumps into my mind is, and we had a great retreat several weeks ago and there was a lot. I mean, there's a million things that we could go after.
Yep.
And I think there were some common trends that emerged through our gallery walk process. And I know that we had discussed potentially rounding those up and kind of sending them out. And I think for me, I would love to, I'm aligned with the recovery, reimagine and the, the policy of the impact that you just shared, Eric.
Yep.
And if we consider like what other big rock we want to go after, I'd like it to come out of the work that we did in the retreat.
Great, yeah, completely agree. And one common theme was pathways. So it seemed like there's something because that came throughout. So it seemed like we should have a goal or I don't, we can define what the goal is, but like that. And then, so we can do that. I know Betsy sent us.
Yeah, we got the feedback sheet.
Yeah.
I just made a note.
Yeah. Yeah.
You didn't.
Yes.
We, we haven't seen it yet. Did I miss it? Did it come?
No, 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 no. Erica, are we just going to review it this week? We'll talk about it and get in Friday's update.
Well, one thing I think, again, talking about vernacular, I think we need to think about our graduates and not like college prep or I know some districts don't even use the word college necessarily, but preparing them for the graduation. And kind of eliminated some of that conversation because I think we always add on. But sometimes it's almost like we need to take something away where it makes it more simple and clear and focused on who and how we're preparing our students after they leave our building, our grounds, our homes.
But another, Erica, I talked about those culture and climate. Some, some sort of wording around culture, you know, continue to build and strengthen, you know, culture and climate, which ultimately supports morale and so.
And it goes with who we want, again, for our citizens, you know, next generation. These are, these are the guys that take care of us.
Kind of fortuitous with the rethinking around AAA's purpose and the goals that we're working on. I know that we're going to be approaching, trying to define that in the very near future and agree if we could build in that as a structure to support driving whatever goal we live on there.
And maybe think about utilize, go back to the mission statement too, you know, we brought it up a complication and trying to really kind of start, you were pushing that, that statement, you know, inspiring, educating. You know, having students become contributing citizens and lifelong learners, et cetera. So if you go back and read that statement, think about it.
Any other thoughts at this point?
Last thought.
You, you have as much of the floor as you want.
I don't want to create additional work for anyone, but once we do get the roundup of trends from, from our retreat, it might be helpful to like pick the top like three or four that, you know, were most, you know, fell up to the top of those during that retreat. Craft a few goals and then bring them back to the board for, for us to kind of vote on which ones. Because I do like our, the approach that we had last year where we were like, we're not going to go after, I remember when I first joined the board.
Yeah, like 300 goals.
The insane number of goals, I could not, you know, tell you on any given day what they were. And I really liked having a ton of focus this past year. And so I, I want us to kind of have that tough conversation around what do we care most about? Because we're not going to be able to do it all.
Yeah, and we could do ranked choice voting on that. So given whatever the top things are, each of us vote our top three. And then from that, you understand about ranked choice voting, I'm sure. It would be a really cool way to do it for us.
Candace.
Oh, yes. I just want to caveat on Lee, I think that the work that we did at the workshop, I think, is pretty telling in some of the ideas that were going on between all of the board members. So I am curious to see what that feedback was. But I also want to just put the plug in for clearly a sustainable district and kind of trying to advertise and market and brand our school district in the years to come so that we can try to create more of a revenue coming into the school district. I kind of feel like a broken record there, but I'm just going to put that plug out there again because I think that we're going to need it. So that might be a good goal to focus on.
Maybe.
So we've talked about this for God knows how many years, but pre-K.
Yeah. Space is.
Yes, space will be.
Well, it's it's pretty much gone, but it's something if we want to bring forth discussions. There's always, you know, the, the North Wing has been absorbed by a lot, sort of thing.
Delightful.
In the world of, yeah. We can always circle back.
We did do a little expansion and we can continue to look at expansion, but to go to universal, we, you know, would be difficult. But we can still look at opportunities to grow beyond our pre-K. Would one of those opportunities be like a full-day option or a before and after pair? Yeah, I mean, I think we can absolutely talk about that.
I always say that because the friendship school model is an amazing model to copy from.
And I know we have wonderful programs in district and I know there are a lot of families that cannot take advantage of that because of the need for before, after care, full-day program. Because it's not feasible for a lot of folks to have to hire additional childcare on top of that.
Jill, I think you have your hand raised.
Yes, I do.
Yes, I do. I just want to, I just want to state what Jamie is saying is I so believe in a pre-K program. And I know we have no room, but I guess is when can we start to make that? Part of our agenda or something that we want to start working forward on? Is that something we need to put off for a year? Or how long until we can start to work on that? And I know funding is an issue. I know some states, some, some states mandated or give you funding.
Yeah, they've been talking about it for a while. I'm not in a early childhood.
They talked about it this summer, about doing a big push at leadership this summer. They talked about it.
So in essence, when can we bring that up? When would be a good time to bring it up again?
Well, you know, maybe to start somewhere, do you start talking about what it would look like for, you know, full day, a full day pre-K program sorts? Exactly. That could be, what, what's, what's an attainable item that we might be able to consider at this time? That could be one.
Well, Jeff, this is Candace. So, you know, we have, and we've talked about this now for quite a few years. And the thought of it is just fantastic and it would be fantastic for our school district. But it would be incredible for families and children and it would bring our, our school district forward. We have separate preschool programs, quite a few actually, that are full. And if we actually took a look at it and tried to incorporate all of them and condense them. Or combine them, if you will, and create a model, yes, similar to what the Friendship School offers. It would be fantastic. Pre-K, I think some people think of that right off the bat as, you know, it would be, you know, hopefully the state of Connecticut would fund it. That's not going to happen anytime soon, but we could certainly put forward a model where it'd be tuition based. And it could be a sliding scale or something of that nature. And I have no doubt that it would, it would fill up and it would be a fantastic option here in the, in the school district. And we have talked about it, although it didn't come up at, I don't think that it did come up at the workshop. But I, I feel like it's something that we could absolutely do. And again, it would bring our, our district forward and progress us quite a bit.
Well, we have been talking about last meeting, let's say, a career pathways program. I'm just thinking out loud about somehow developing a career pathways for students who want to work with their own children. Whether it be nursing or childcare, or maybe they want to be teachers. And they could be part of that network, which gives us more staffing now. To build that kind of program where there's pre-K services with one of those pathways.
Yeah, we already have the, we've got one high school student working at Flanders in the before care program. Yeah, so it's already, it's there, it's just, you know, it's, man, it's a good point. Be able to get an expanding.
We, yeah, we actually have a preschool program at the high school.
Definitely room for.
We just haven't talked about, we kind of like, it dropped off of our talk about radar for about a year and a half because of COVID. So I've kind of been giving it a break and bringing it up a bit, but I feel like since COVID's on the way out, we can bring it back.
You could explore, maybe a goal of exploring, you know, over the course of this year, some different options of sorts, but.
Well, I, we have child finds, you know, we're looking for the kids, we're identifying them. And we're meeting and sending out, if you're concerned, the pediatricians are involved. There's so much work that's already being done on this area. There's, I don't know how many daycare facilities are in the area, but. Three in town. So it's like, the work is being done at some level is my point. And when I moved here back in 96. Prior to that, we were doing work in Nebraska as a speech pathologist, going to some of those daycares, providing instruction. Including them in some of our training. So I think there's a different way of looking at it. Sometimes we don't necessarily need to. Build another building, make another program, but we can cap, kind of caveat and support. And implement ideas and strategies. And my daughter, when I was working in New London, would come and work in a. Elementary school in a kindergarten program over there because she had half days, two or three days a week. So would get early dismissal and drive over and have that, then have that childhood experience of working. And those kids needed the help. So it was a great experience for her. So I think there's all kinds of opportunities. But I think we have to identify what the need is first and, and, and am I seeing that correctly? But you know, I think there's, I think there's other ways of doing it, like into Laura's point, we don't necessarily need to add expense. But thinking, again, the low hanging fruit idea and what is already available and using resources of people who'd be interested in. In volunteering and doing that kind of work.
Any other thoughts other than pre-K?
I remember prior to my, me joining the board, like many years, a few years ago, we used to have the reintroducing world languages to earlier grades.
Yeah, just a quick comment here. So this idea list is fantastic. I have no objections to anything on the table. But I think it's, it's telling that there's, we have a lot of options, right? There's a lot of things that could improve our district. And I think it'd be, be good as sort of part of that assessment and to help us focus. To kind of understand. Where, where we're at today with making these things happen and what will bring this value to the district. Sort of kind of partnering it with, you know, the, the objectives that we see are, you know, kind of our top priorities.
Yeah, so, I mean, it's great, but what, here's what, so this is really good and helpful. I think it got some ideas out and then we can also send out the information that. So ultimately, you know, I think we made a great point. And I'm, you know, if you have a hundred goals, you basically have no goals because you can't, you got to focus. You got to pick the things that you're going to do and that you're passionate about and you got to drive those and be successful and then move on. Which means there's some things that this list is already is great. And some of the things we may not be able to do in this next year, but it might go to next year, right? But you pick the thing, some things that you really want to focus on, you're passionate about, and are going to really make an impact on the district. So that's the prioritization process that we'll need to go through. And from what I'm thinking, and I'm happy for comments, is we get a list. We maybe may need a sentence or two to describe what each of these means from a broad perspective. And then we do some type of prioritization voting process. And then when we narrow the list to things that we're most passionate on, it might not be all of them that we end up having goals. But if we're going to have five goals and you, you get to a list of like seven or something. Then you write out goals and then you prioritize again, because now you kind of see, this is what we're really talking about. This is what we're going to do. And then you pick your, the top, again, four to five or something like that. So that's what I'm thinking of from a process perspective. It gives us a chance, a few chances to make sure we all understand what we're signing up for. Because that, I've seen in the past, you set a goal and people are like, oh, six months later, I didn't think that's what we're doing. I thought we were doing something else. So make sure that we're all aligned on that. I mean, I'm, I agree with, you know, but Lee said we should go back and look at that list. The comments that were made tonight are all great. I, I wonder though if. You know, i- if, if we go through some sort of voting process, if we do this in a way such that. We're in a position right now where we're trying to find a half a million dollars. You know that next year is not going to be easier. So while all the ideas are great ideas, some of them cost a lot. And some of them don't really cost a lot in terms of, you know, dollars. They may cost a lot in terms of, you know. Time, people, you know, rearranging of side committees and work. But we might be able to get significant change for. Not, you know, without putting us in a position, say, say, just say, for example, we adopt universal pre-K. And we say, we're all in because it's a great idea. Let's do it. That means, okay. We were all in on something else that we now got to pull out of our program, kind of like the language thing that we had to pull out. Because we couldn't pay for. So I, I think that as we choose these things, we may want to say, okay, if we're choosing this. It likely means that we're giving up something else in order to choose that. Versus some of the choices we might make may not require as much of pulling away from something else. Yeah, ultimately, that's a great point. You know, our budget to an extent is zero sum. We put something in, something else is coming out because our budget increases are essentially just. You know, covered benefit increases, cover merit increase, you know, whatever other utility increases and things like inflation. And, you know, health insurance. So we're not getting, you know, the likelihood as we look at next budget year. Which we're going to start having meetings of like a month and a half on or something. You know, we're not, so it, it ends up at zero sum. So you're right. If anything we put in, we have to recognize there's something that we either comes out. Or we find ways to do things more efficient, like just do something differently that, that costs less. And still deliver. So it, there's a finance lens on, on a lot of this as we, we look at it.
So Eric, can I just, I'm going to virtually raise my hand here. And, and going back to revenue, revenue, revenue. And trying to, we, we have incredible programs. That actually bring in money for the school district. And if they were advertised and put out in a sufficient way. Because right as of now, it's almost as though it's in-house. It's like word of mouth. It's, it's really not advertised on the level that I'm thinking of. And I, I think that some may agree and some may not. But if we were to be able to. Up that and bring in more revenue into our school district. Then I'm hopeful that we would be able to move forward with certain initiatives and expansions of programs and that kind of thing. Because at this moment, with the $500,000 that we have to come up with. And just the intensity and the challenges financially that are just going to be compacted. With each budget cycle, it's not going to get any easier. So I, I, I feel like it's a no brainer, but it's being pushed to the side. So I'm just going to continue to make plugs for it and speak to it publicly. Because we have a tremendous amount within our district to be proud of. Our people just, they work so hard and they've created wonderful, wonderful program within the district that we could market. And, and brand and advertise and, and we could bring in money for our school district.
Thanks Candace. Any last thoughts, comments? So just to summarize. We'll send out the list from Betty from the retreat. We talked just some of the things that I heard. We talked about pathways. We talked about culture, climate, and the redefinition, repurposing of AAA. We talked about reviewing the mission, mission statement, a sustainable district, marketing and branding the district. We talked about pre-K. We talked about global language. And then this is my own wording, Bill, sort of, but delivering high quality. Delivering high quality education, maybe more efficiently, which also could include increasing revenues to fund programs. So somehow, how do we deliver high education and get some of these things in? Maybe more efficiently, it could be things come out, but also as Candace said, we get more revenue in, which helps fund it. So, you know, there's numerous ways to get there. And then we can add to this list and then we'll go through. Thanks, everyone. All right. We're moving on to discussion action items for finance facilities and community. And we have the first discussion action item is the Flanders School Greenhouse, which is very cool.
Yeah, this is, we have an awesome proposal here. Amy Rogers is here from Flanders PTA, Chris Urban as well. And I'll, I'll let them kind of share some information about how this came to fruition. Chris, you want to, you want to start?
Actually Gary White's here too, so.
Oh, sorry. Gary, excellent. Gary's here too. Great. So Gary takes, gives a great job taking care of the Flanders Garden, so I'm glad.
So last year when we, we looked like we were going to have some extra funds left over in the lunch program. I went, I went to Gary and said, what's on your wish list for your garden? What can you, you know, products that you could grow that could benefit the lunch program? And I said, you know, kind of let your imagination run wild. And he got together with Amy from the PTA and at Flanders and they came up with the greenhouse idea. When they came to me with it, I loved it. It's going to be able to start all the vegetables earlier. So the growing season will actually be able to take more advantage of from the Flanders Garden. And also we can use it as a growing starter for the Nyanic Center Garden that's going to be getting installed this school year. So. So Gary wants to talk a little, Amy wants to talk a little? See, I know she has a PowerPoint presentation for you.
Yeah, we, yeah, the, the, yep, the slides are, are in. I hope everybody had a chance to see the slides, what the greenhouse looked like. Amy, anything you want to share at all? Feel free to come up to the mic if you, if you want or.
I'm kind of just thinking some thoughts that were in the presentation to share if anybody's not aware. So over the last couple of years, we started with building gardens, raised beds. For the students to become more involved with the garden and encourage that. So this greenhouse is a great opportunity to extend that. One of the challenges of the garden beds, the timing when things are growing and harvesting. So this will really expand that growing season. So really excited about that opportunity to have students. Starting earlier and still have some things going on in the fall. And we also talked about being able to grow herbs that could be incorporated into the lunch program and having that conversation as well. We also spoke with Mr. Wilson, who does the shop or tech ed program at the high school. And collaborating with them to install or assemble the greenhouse kit as well. So we're really trying to make connections where we can. We have a proposal for, for a concrete pad for the greenhouse to sit on. That happens to be someone who was a Flanders student, so Flanders alumni, which is fantastic to be able to support a small business as well. So it's really becoming a nice community project. Use of those funds, it's something we can carry on. Aesthetically, the placement would be near the current garden where it is now. It gets full sunlight, it's open area for security purposes. So we're concerned about that. About a fence going in there, so it would eventually be a closed area, so we don't need to worry about students heading towards the road. So makes that area a nice usable space and aesthetically pleasing. The PTA would support any additional upkeep of it over the years. So it is a Western red cedar, so it should be pulled up really nicely. But we plan to put some planters around and make it look like it's part of the community and just kind of parked there.
Gary's here as well too. If, Gary, I don't know if you had anything you wanted to share either, if we open up the questions. I mean, Gary, Gary's here all summer long out there watering the garden and it's a great job maintaining it. Gary, any, anything you wanted to add? Are you good?
Ah, yeah, I think it's just a great collaboration with the high school, Chris and Chris. And I think it's going to be a wonderful thing for the Flanders community, the high school. And if we can collaborate also with the other schools that are getting involved with, with gardening. So I appreciate Amy's hard work with doing the, the legwork on kind of finding the greenhouse. And then just the collaboration with all the, all the people involved has been terrific. So I appreciate having this opportunity and I hope the board can support it.
As Kristin said, you know, Nyanic Center is formulating a garden with Chris's help. And eventually we'll want to move over to Lilybee as well. So we might have a little preheave as he just started, but.
Yeah, we wanted to give Brian a little break. Yeah, we wanted to give Brian a little break, break in period, and we'll stick the garden on him. The, the one caveat with this, of course, it's USDA money, like the other funds that you approved. With this one, it's not a pre-approved item from the state like the ovens were and some of the other items. That you approved. So after you approve this, we actually have to send the proposal to the state and then they have to approve it before we can actually purchase it. But talking with the state rep, they, they love school gardens, so I don't think it'll be any issue.
And, and Chris, maybe if I could just state that again, because I think it's really important as we, the next topic, as we talk about a truck and we have our deficit and every, this is. This purchase is completely separate than any of the rest of our normal budgeting.
Yeah, all the money comes 100% out of the school lunch program, not one taxpayer penny.
Yeah, exactly. So that, that's really important and it's a great, hopefully they'll approve it. This is a great use case, did you have?
Well, yeah, composting is one thing. I'm just wondering, are you planning, is this part of the program that you'll compost the fruits and vegetables things, non-meat products that can be?
Yeah.
Well.
Did Port purchase two of the barrel composters that we use in the garden now? You don't have, like. Chris doesn't have like commercial composting setup, but we do compost in the school garden at Flanders.
Okay, and that, that's great. I commend you for that. And then also I have a resource for you. His name is Derek Dawson. He runs the. Educational program in Stonington. It's called the Yellow Farmhouse. And he does, he encourages people to come in. School communities to come and do field trips and to see his program. And he, he's an alum from Con College. And calls himself a farmer and. A scientist, I believe, or is to, but a farmer and an educator, but he's not what you think of as a typical farmer by any shape or stretch of your imagination. So, and I can give you his number, but a great guy and got his degree in farms and. Agriculture and, and teaching kids and getting kids excited to, and then he's, he's really big too right now on farm or fall planting. So told me that I should put my chart in now and my lettuce and spinach and. And to regenerate, he's in the regeneration of gardening too, is the other thing.
Is it Eric Dawson's Yellow?
Yellow Farmhouse. I can give you this number.
Yeah, thanks. Okay. I have a motion.
I would like to recommend approval of the proposed Flanders School Greenhouse purchased through food services in the amount of $11,816.
Further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
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 Jill has a hand, so we're all good. Opposed, abstained. Motion passes. Thanks. This is really cool. I can't wait to see it. Hopefully, Chris, we can get it through and we can all get a tour of it at some point.
Just one, one side note to this too. Annalise just made a connection with the Giving Garden. We had some. Yeah, she had a meeting with them this, last week, so.
You'll give us an update in your reports.
Yeah.
Yes, because it'd be nice to link. There's a lot of links. Yeah.
Great, Amy, thank you.
Yeah, thanks so much. And thanks, Gary, for keeping the garden up. Appreciate it.
Thanks so much.
Next topic is discussion action item on the maintenance truck request. So if you remember this, we. Postponed. From last meeting, because we wanted a little more information. I think Chris has gotten some additional information that came in there.
Was it Friday? It was Friday, Friday, yeah.
So I don't. I mean, I don't know that we need to go back through everything, or I guess I'd rather not unless we need, someone asks for that. I'd rather go kind of right to questions for Chris. Or Jeff.
Yeah, hopefully you had a chance to kind of review the information that Chris provided. And I guess we'll open up there any other questions. We did all the checking in town.
So thank you, Chris and Jeff for like the information that you provided to us this week about that. I just have a question that we didn't ask, but. Just curious, so we have four trucks, so we have four trucks, or one of them is the one that we're looking to replace, right? What is the status of the other three trucks? Are we, are they near the end of their life? And what's our plan for?
So, yes. So actually. Budget season was rolled around last year, one of the trucks were. Bought a tractor because that was our meat. What you can see next year's budgets, another truck because they're all about the same age. Mine is the one we bought most recently. That's two years old. Everything else on, on fleet out there is ten plus years. So they should really be at that stage or being replaced. So. This would take one of those back out, but very soon the others.
That's good to know. We don't want to be in a position where we're down multiple.
Yeah, getting them on a, on a cycle of replacement of sorts.
Other questions?
I think we should get Chris to fund it through the food program. We've got to plow our way to the greenhouse.
Right, exactly. Other questions or comments?
I would like to make a motion to approve the use of learn funds to purchase a maintenance truck in the amount of $53,191.46. And forward this request to the Board of Selectmen for the next meeting occurring October 5th, 2022.
Second. Estimons that. Okay, further discussion? Okay, all those in favor? Say aye.
Aye.
Yes. Candace?
I'm a no.
Oh, sorry, yeah. Sorry, opposed?
Aye.
Okay, motion abstained? I don't think I heard any abstained. Motion passes. Thanks, Chris, for doing the extra homework and providing us a lot more information. For those who don't know at home, we did look at the opportunity to buy. Used truck and other options within trucks and there really is. Everything ends up because of the market that we're in, everything is really more expensive. And that we did talk to the town, they're short staff. They don't really have availability. They could help us in kind of emergency use, but it's not. Not on a steady basis that we can rely on them. So we ended up. We really don't have many options left, I don't think. So, so thanks, Chris, for doing that work.
And if you contracted that out.
Oh.
Maybe you could spend half the cost of the truck in one season.
Yeah, that.
Which would be.
Yeah, that was, that was, it was not, that was cost prohibitive. So, yeah, thanks, Jeff. I forgot about that. Okay, moving on to the. Next item in finance facilities, community is discussion action on the K board recognition award. So we have been recognized as level two, a level two board. For a number of years. I can't remember how long, how long that, yeah. So this is the. The submission or, or we need approval or. We need a motion to approve this. We submitted, so Jackie, thank you, Jackie, who did a lot of work. It's. One of the things, you got to get all the minutes that coincide with the questions that they asked. So going through the last year and whatever and finding those minutes that. Link up to the questions that are asked. So it's a lot of work and Jackie did a ton of work, so I appreciate that. Any? Questions on the submission? Okay.
I would like to make a motion to move forward the K board recognition award as presented.
Secondly, further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye. Aye.
And abstained. Good. Okay, so now we're moving on. Discussion action items policy and I'll turn it over to Jamie to lead us through this. Just one.
I see that.
Okay.
It's easier. It's just waiting.
Good, thank you.
Okay, so discussion action item one is a second review, which means it needs to be voted on tonight. A suggested deletion of policies in the thousand series. The policies up for deletion are 11, 10.1, 13, 12, 13, 21, 13, 25, and 14, 16. I would like to make a motion to delete the policies in the 1,000 series as presented.
I'll second it. I'll second it if I can.
Good, thanks. I think Elisa, Elisa had beat you to it, but.
Oh, did she? Sorry.
There's a lot, there's a lot of them, Jill, so.
We'll put the numbers up and I'll pick the ones I want.
Further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstained, okay.
Discussion action item B is a second review of suggested revision to the policies in 1,000 series. Those policies, that policy needs to be voted on. It is. 13, 25, advertising and promotion of commercial activities, and this one is just a revision date. We didn't change anything.
Take a motion to approve the suggested revision of the policies in the 1,000 series as presented.
Second.
Second. Further discussion? All those in favor? Say aye. Aye, opposed.
I'm an aye.
I think it's just a time delay.
Yeah. And abstained. Okay.
All right, the next one, discussion action item C is a second review of a suggested deletion in the 2,000 series, which means, it means it needs to be voted upon. The suggested deleted policy is 2234, treatment of outside reports.
Motion to approve the suggested deleted policies in the 2,000 series as presented.
Thank you.
At least a second. Further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye. I'm an aye.
Got it, thank you. Opposed?
Nope.
Abstained.
Discussion action item D is a second review of suggested policies for deletion in the 4,000 series, which we, we need to be voted on. Those two policies are 4112 and 4117.5.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the suggested delete policy is in the 4,000 series as presented.
Further discussion? All those in favor, say aye. Opposed?
Aye. Aye.
Slower. And, no, no, I was, I, I need to pause more and wait. Opposed? Abstained? Okay, motion passed.
All right, discussion action item E, second review of suggested revisions of policies in the 4,000 series. Those three policies are 4112.24, which is just a revision date, no change, 4112.5 and 4147.1.
I'd like to make a motion to approve a suggested revision of policies in the 4,000 series.
Okay.
Further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye. Aye. Aye, aye.
Opposed? Abstained? Okay. Motion passed.
Discussion action item F. Is a second review of policies. Hold on, I'm on the back button. I got to get back up. There we go. Second review suggested new policy in the 4,000 series. This policies are, these policies are priority eight, 24, and 48. They are new policies.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the suggested new policies in the 4,000 series as presented.
Seconds, further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye. Aye.
You opposed? Motion passes.
Right G, discussion action item, second review, suggested deletion of policies in the 5,000 series. Those policies are 5124, 5141.1, and 5144.
I'd like to make a motion to approve or suggest a deleted policy in the 5,000 series as presented.
Further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye. Aye.
Okay, opposed? Abstained? Motion passes.
Discussion action. H is suggested revision of policies in the 5,000 series. Those policies that are being revised are 5132, 5141.4.
You're on a roll.
It makes copy and paste real easy.
Further discussions? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye. I do.
Opposed? Ended up staying. Okay, motion passes.
Discussion action, I am, I. A second review of a suggested new policy in the 5,000 series. This policy is 5141.6.
Motion to approve the suggested new policies in the 5,000 series as presented.
Second, further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye. Aye.
Opposed, abstained? Bring us home.
So I, discussion action item J is a suggested deletion of policies in the 6,000 series. Those policies are as follows, 6114, 6114.3, 6115, 6120, 6121, 6140, 6141.31, 6141.32, 1, 6146, 6146.2, 6161, 6161.2, 6161.3, 6162.51, 6163.1, 6173, 6180, and 6200.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the suggested deleted policies in the 6,000 series as presented.
Further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye. Aye.
Opposed, abstained? Motion passes. Thank you to the Policy Committee, Jamie, Elisa, and Jill. Really appreciate all. It, it was tiring for us to go through that. So just imagine that you're actually reading all the policies and editing and going through it. So that, it's a lot of work and, and really appreciate it. It is amazing the pace that they, that you guys kept up to get to, that we're talking about the 9,000 series when.
Two more than half, yeah.
Oh, I can't.
We were locked out, so we almost did. Okay, so that ends the Discussion Action Items for today, today's meeting, and we move on to Administration Reports, and we start with Jeff.
Yeah, nothing really new, and we, I know we met last week, we gave some information as well as, you know, the weekly update. The one piece I'm still struggling with trying to figure out the Budget Workshop Date, because I know November, the delegation, we had the, I think it was the seventeenth of November, but that's the delegation night. So a few of you are probably going to that, the Cape Caps Workshop. Then we started looking at the Wednesday before, but that was an issue, the Tuesday, I don't know if you're still teaching, Bill, on Tuesdays?
Yeah, you are.
Okay, so that puts Tuesday, so I'm, I'm kind of stuck with what we, we do there. I don't know if anybody has any suggestions, or if we just try and.
Was the Monday night not good for someone?
The Monday, let me see.
Because we don't have board meeting.
Maybe.
So we were looking, November fourteenth.
Back to November fourteenth. I couldn't make that work. I, I mean, I couldn't make that work. I don't know how, does everybody else have Monday the fourteenth? Maybe, maybe this is, I thought. Okay.
To the good side.
At least you're not going to Japan.
Jill and Candace, any thoughts on Monday night, the fourteenth of November for our board budget retreat, or workshop, sorry, workshop?
Yes, I'm good. When can that be confirmed, though?
Might be doing, we might confirm it right now.
Okay, just want to get it my calendar.
You said Monday the fourteenth?
Yes.
Okay.
We have to make it a little later, more like six or six thirty, probably six, keep it consistent.
Six. Okay, I'm putting it in my calendar.
We'd be in the high school library again, like we have done in the past. That seems to work, we've bound the big tables, we, we'll invite Board of Finance, really want to get a date solidified, that's great, because I want to get that message out to, you know, to town, yeah, exactly. Okay.
Okay, good, perfect, all set.
All right, so we're on the fourteenth. And then Mariana, we've been talking about working on a, a mock rollover, too, really kind of already hitting the budget very early with projections. So we'll have a lot, probably a lot more information for that November meeting than we've ever had before, as it depends on numbers, and we really got to get some discussions out there early regarding costs for next year, so. And that's, that's it.
You think two hours for that meeting?
I'm thinking more like eight or nine, maybe. No, yeah, we usually stick with two, two and a half hours, and that's plenty.
By that time.
Yeah, that's it.
And Elise?
Yeah, so, you know, I did have an opportunity to meet with Bruce, Lisa and John over at the Giving Garden, which quite honestly, I don't know if any of you have been over there. It's really amazing when John does a very short period of time. Yeah, and so it was quite a treat for me. I, you know, I'm not sure how much you, you know, my real, like, long-term history, but I, you know, taught a service learning, when I was teaching science in high school, it was a service learning course out in the community, we didn't step foot in the classroom. We were out in the field, two full days a week restoring open spaces. And so this is just really, you know, true to my heart. So it was very, just really energizing, thank you for making the connection, Jeff. And so I did just really quickly provide, I had a curriculum instructional leader meeting in the afternoon, Lori Singer, who is the curriculum instructional leader for science at the high school, provided her with some information, but we are formally meeting a week from today to talk about, you know, some of the topics that are, you know, what the folks I met over at the Giving Garden thought could be good topics to explore. But essentially, it, the space is ours to use as we sit, see fit in the terms of instructional, instructional educational use. And, you know, they were pretty much like, if you need it, we'll bring it. And they can sustain work that we do over the summer, but, you know, it, I mean.
It's for the walking distance, too.
You know, there's a lot of ideas out there, I can see lots of connections with the local, like the school-based greenhouses we're doing at the elementary level, but for the sake of just getting a partnership established, I'd really like to start small, grow it out. So we will identify some opportunities within our science curriculum at the high school to start, and I'll keep you informed along the way.
They were very eager when high school put something.
Yeah, and really, wow, what a dynamic group of people, very.
Strong, strong leadership, which is how things get done, so we, so for, they're, they're gonna get things done.
It's amazing, it really is.
Yeah, I, I mean, I, and I, they donated nine thousand pounds of food so far. You know, growing vegetables, amazing.
I, when you say high school, you mean high school as in our regular high school kids and our coastal kids, right?
Yeah, so coastal's already made a connection. They're, they're looking at it or approaching it more through the service lens to start. Tim Dowd has made the connection over there, and, but I, I have a feeling that will grow too. And then I'll, I'll meet with Lori on more of a curricular connection through some of our science courses. True, so, I mean, it's been just a very short week since we met last. Put some information in the update around the homework piece and the tech piece, but if anybody has any questions, I'd have to answer them.
Thanks, Annalise, Mariana. You gotta keep us entertained, so you gotta be like. Okay. So that closes our committee reports. Oh, no, I'm sorry, that calls our administration reports, thank you. Committee reports, we didn't have a triple A, we didn't have FFO, we did those, so policy was today.
So Policy Committee made a huge dent in the nine thousand series tonight. And we really, I think we really could have finished if we had just kept on going, but we do actually have homework. We have homework to give. We would like the triple A committee to take the standing committee policy of triple A committee and have a discussion action in your committee, and we would like FFO to take their standing committee, and maybe we would like them to have a discussion action in their committee, and bring it back to policy so that we can further along that work, because we don't want to make the decisions on what you're doing in your committees.
That's great.
You, seriously?
Get your homework done.
So, but we, and Eric, you sent in feedback, and Lee, you sent in feedback, so we discussed all of your, I don't know if we got to all of their feedback tonight, but we got the most of it.
Was that helpful to have?
It was great, it was perfect. We worked through all your issues that you had with policy, and we figured it out. But we did, we got.
I have a lot of issues, can you work through some of my other issues?
But thank you, everybody, it helps when we're all charging through it together. That's a thank you, thank you for all your feedback, I appreciate it.
Any questions heard, Jamie? Okay, so we are moving, the closes committee reports, and we are moving on to Board Comment and Future Agenda Items.
I'll just.
Kate, we have.
A couple of years ago, pre-COVID, when it was a different world, we had the opportunity as new board members, and so Estefan, I think, would enjoy it, and it was to tour the schools, and to have an opportunity, and just wondering if that would be something that could be arranged to get.
Yeah.
Especially in light of budget, everything else that's going on, and new principal, and just seeing kind of what's going on. It's just nice to hear what's on the ground, it's nice.
Yeah, it's amazing, it's been, yeah, three or four years.
Yeah, that's right.
Yeah.
And then our late bus is only three days a week, is that a budgetary thing that we only have a three days a week at the high school? And.
Yeah, and middle school.
It's the same bus, right, it goes.
Yeah.
Picks up, that goes, comes here to the high school, and then picks up.
Is there carpooling? Because I know there's activities, is there a way for transportation? How does that, how is that arranged for people who still might need transportation, but there's not a late bus? I understand there's budgetary constraints on that, but how does that get worked out at the, at the real practical level?
I guess it's up to parents to, yeah, phone a friend and.
Do people help facilitate that? How does that work out?
I think they. Yeah, but having a middle school, I think Facebook, they all talk, parents talk, I mean, I know, my wife talks with some other parents, they coordinate rides as necessary sort of thing, so. They do it on their own, we have no affiliation with, we just do the late bus, that's it.
Okay, I was wondering for a friend, neighbor who has asked for support, so how could I help her? How do I direct that?
To, does she have any nearby neighbors that have middle school students, or high school students? Where she could combine or look for a potential ride, or.
I don't know.
Reach out on Facebook?
I mean, I think we.
I don't think they use Facebook, so.
Yeah, no, because we can't give out parent information.
No.
I mean, yeah, I don't know, I mean, you ask a team, I mean, I, I don't know how many people I've driven home in different places, even if they're not even close to my, I mean, I play with, play with my son or daughter a sport on their, on the same team. I don't necessarily, it may not be close, but I, I've driven, and there's lots of parents, I think, who are just, you know, if you ask, just need to ask.
I think. That's from the two things, thank you.
Yeah, I don't know if I should go under Board Comment or Future Agenda Item, and I'm concerned if you've been doing this out there, because I know, no one has capacity, but I was talking with one of my educator friends, and this year her district is rolling out something pretty interesting called like, they have like a parent PD series, where once a month, they like pick a different, and they have one at the elementary, middle and high school level. Sometimes they're a person, mostly they're virtual, but it's basically a PD opportunity for parents that's aligned to like either what they're, you know, the SCL, like, you know, thing that they're working on in their school, or, you know, you know, tech literacy, or, you know, there's different kind of, based on the age range that parents can opt into, just to, you know, kind of strengthen the partnership between school and home, and also, you know, help parents keep up with this rapidly evolving world as well. And so I just thought it was interesting, I know that we offer those kind of sporadically throughout the districts, but the thought of having like a calendar where parents can kind of opt into these PD opportunities monthly, was just really interesting, and so I wanted to put that out there.
That's like my biking artifact class. Yeah, that gives a biking artifact.
Yeah, so Jeff, I've been talking to Jeff about one of my goals in terms of, you know, parent engagement is around, I referred to it as parent university, but same type of.
I like that better.
Concept is offering, and Sarah Furman and I are meeting next week to sort of talk about it, but I wasn't thinking every month. But definitely thinking, you know, over the course of the school year, different crucial components of the time, like you're thinking about standards based report card at the elementary level. Something new to parents, we got a lot of feedback in the survey that they'd like to understand better the standards and what it means. So obviously, that would be something that we would offer closer to when your report cards come out. So that is something I've been talking to Jeff about, and I would like to, you know, approach it from a more comprehensive, you know, with a scope and sequence type. So we're thinking about it, and I'd love to, you know, if you guys have ideas.
And I was gonna say, many, many moons ago, Jason gave a math literacy course to parents at a PTA meeting.
Well, there's all kinds of resources.
I'm throwing, I'm throwing you out there, sorry. I said many, many moons ago, when you wore a different hat, you gave parent literacy on math at PTA meetings. It was very helpful, very, very helpful.
Well, there's all kinds of resources, and I think that's the thing, that if you're designing this university, there's a lot of educators in the area who would be willing to volunteer, to speak, to present, just that kind of thing.
Right.
So the resources are available, it doesn't have to be you doing all the work.
Yeah, because I, I was hesitant to even bring it up, because I'm like, I really don't think you have a capacity right now. And I do think they already exist, and I know parents probably would love to have an hour session on like current, you know, mental health trends, and how that's, you know, being addressed in schools, and how they can support at home, and so I think there's an appetite for it, if there was some way to round that up in like a scope and sequence, not monthly, but I think it could be, it could be something cool to look at.
Yeah.
Or it's already underway, it sounds like, which is great.
Yeah, I mean, we've been talking about it, but it's, you know, I do really need to get on it and get it marketed and out there. So part of our, one of our outcomes with Sarah next week is to really firm some things up, because I, I do, I would like it to be a community-based partnership, too, and not just something the school owns, but that it's a real demonstration of community and school working together, so.
Eric, I have my hand up, if anybody can see it, I wish I could wave it, but I can't wave it.
Yeah, Jamie, I saw Jamie and then Candace.
Mine, just a reminder that Oyster Fest is this Saturday, and also the Suicide Walk. So, Suicide Out of the Darkness, thank you, Out of the Darkness Walk is also this Saturday. So take a nice walk on the boardwalk, and then move back around and come to the Oyster Festival.
Oyster Festival, ten to.
Suicide Out of the Darkness Walk first, and then move around and come to the Oyster Fest. Twelve o'clock for the Oyster Fest and ten o'clock for the walk.
Ten till noon, till you're done.
Yeah, it generally goes ten till probably close to noon.
Until you're done.
The boardwalk loop around against oysters.
Basically, ten to noon, I would plan on for the walk, although we've got a central.
Jeff and Mariana did an eight-hour podcast that you can listen to.
Well, not much.
Candace?
All right, I love all those comments. The one thing that I wanted to say tonight was, I, I'd like to have the new cashless system at the high school revisited. And I know we had talked about this, going to FFO, so if you want to have it at the next FFO, or if you want to have it at the next meeting, whatever you'd like to do. But I, I think that there's a lot of quirks that maybe we can help with, and one of them that I'm hearing the most about is this QR code, not having wifi at the school, so it's not accessible. A lot of people were not able to get in to see the game, people were turned away, cash being an issue. So knowing that we're trying to, you know, move in a direction of a cashless system, which, you know, certainly is the wave of the trend or what have you, but there might, it might behoove of the district to still have an option for cash for the time being as this new process kind of navigates out, because apparently it was quite the issue, and it's not very consumer-friendly. So I think we should talk about it.
Yeah, why don't we bring that to FFO, because I think there's a few things that we can talk about, and then we can also then bring it to board as, as needed, but when's your.
I'm just looking now, it's funny, we've got AAA for October third and October seventeenth, so we can make one of those FFO.
Okay. Well, it sounds like if it's.
Yeah, I mean, I think that we should schedule something, I don't mind scheduling something, I think that it should happen.
Yeah, I heard it too, yep, I think probably done it too, so.
Yeah, and I think that there's, I really do think that there are great, great ways to, you know, ensure that, you know, everyone can come in and, and watch a game and still move the district forward in the, in the, you know, way that, that is happening, you know what I'm saying? But maybe in a slower pace, or give people time, and you can, there's just so many different ideas that can really kind of smooth out the water, you know, that, that way everybody is, is still able to come in to see the games, nobody's having issues at the gate, because that's not okay, that's not good. And not everybody does have a smartphone, and even if you did have the smartphone, apparently the wifi is not supporting it. So the QR code was very, very difficult, apparently, so.
Thanks, Candace.
Yep.
Other Board Comment, Future Agenda Item.
I just had one comment, and going back to homework, I was having an interesting conversation with my sister-in-law, and she was complaining about her granddaughter's homework. And I said, and she was, she was saying that it was. And I said, and she was, she was saying that it was a struggle for her granddaughter to get the homework done. And the conversation that we had was that it's not just about her getting the homework done, there's just like so many other things in, in homework, where it's a way for parents to understand what the expectations are, for parents to kind of understand the curriculum, the concepts that are being taught, and to have the structure for completion. And I thought that was just like, and for her, it was like a real paradigm shift, where she was like, oh, because she'd never thought of homework in that way before, just like, you know, you need to get homework done, as opposed to this opportunity for them to have that relationship and to work together to achieve the best for their ability.
Thanks, Kate. Okay. We want to make the motion.
I'd like to make a motion to adjourn.
All those in favor, aye, say aye.
Aye.
Most abstained. Meeting, thanks, everyone.